I was just thinking somewhere busy yesterday.
I guess you got to do that.
This is the opposite.
Draw for horses.
Yeah, I guess you got to draw.
So when is the next time you're going to be in the area?
She's home with the thing. That'll be fine.
You can call me.
Stand in line and.
Are you unconscious?
No, I wasn't.
See you this afternoon.
Absolutely. I don't want to. They got their money.
No, no, I just made.
Yeah.
But that's all he has.
Must be working.
Hi Amber.
Hey, how are you? I know, it's okay. I'm still mine.
I want to find out what I can help.
Yeah. We've talked a lot of stuff we were asking before.
Let me know what you missed.
Maybe if you could use more meat, like burgers, dogs. I'll look.
Alright, sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm sure that one helped.
Yeah, there's something great.
What? Um, just like he's due a little bit. Uh, but he's gonna call up my like, yeah, I'm trying to do this thing too. He's traveling.
Good morning. Good morning. How are you?
David's here. Doing well, how about you Commissioner?
Good, thank you. Who else we have? So did you just call in?
Hi, it's Hutch.
Hi Hutch.
Morning.
Morning. The gentleman right?
Absolutely.
Morning everyone, I ask you please rise for the opening prayer and pledge allegiance. Dear Holy Father, we praise you for this day and your purpose for it. Look through our eyes today to seek you first. May we ask for your wisdom and guidance throughout our days. As we plan our course, establish our steps. When we stumble, we pray that you will pick us up and direct us in your path. We ask that you cover our valley with peace and comfort. Lord, tomorrow is the day we remember our armed forces in the month of May as National Military Appreciation Month. This is a day and a month to pay tribute to the men and women who served the United States military. We thank you for their lives and we pray for their safety and protection. Father, as we conduct this meeting this morning, may you multiply our efforts as only you can. We see your blessings daily and we give you the praise. We pray in this divided nation of opinions that will be quick to listen with an open ear and slow to anger that often produces bitterness and hate. Lord, we are thankful we live in a land of freedoms that include the opportunity to freely vote for those officials. Another primary season is upon us and we pray for your blessings over the elections. May there be glory and peace in this meeting. Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting and we'll ask for the approval of the minutes of this meeting. My favorite say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we'll have colored comments on agenda items only at this time. See them from the audience, do you have any online?
We do not.
Okay, moving on. Max?
Um, 1.6, nonprofit informational series, what we do for you, what they do for you. Today, we have Wise Options and Amber Morningstar is here.
Good morning. Good morning Amber. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me Commissioner. Good morning. My name is Amber Morningstar and I'm the Program Director at the YWCA here in Williamsport. Our mission at the YWCA is eliminating racism, empowering women, and promoting peace, justice, freedom, and dignity for all. We have two core programs, Wise Options and Liberty House, so I'd like to talk just a tad bit about both. In fiscal year 2020-2021, Wise Options served 1,333 survivors of violence. 138 of them were children. Wise Options is a safe haven and source of support for adults and children who have experienced the physical, emotional, and psychological pain of domestic violence, sexual assault, and other violent crimes. All of the services provided at Wise Options are free and confidential. Additionally, we're the only victim service provider in Lycoming County, so there is no duplication of our services. The services of Wise Options include our emergency crisis and support hotline, individual and group counseling, safety planning, protection from abuse, sexual violence and intimidation orders, legal, medical, and victim advocacy and accompaniment, relocation, rapid rehousing, safe custody exchanges, and community education. Our emergency shelter can house roughly 29 adults, but this varies depending on need. My staff would tell you that they're often taking apart beds and cribs to accommodate families who are actively fleeing violent homes. Legal and victim advocacy is a huge portion of Wise Options programming. The request for protection orders has steadily increased over the last few years. In fiscal year 2020, our advocates provided 443 protection orders for adults and children seeking legal protection from an abusive partner, family member, or rapist. Last year, our advocates completed 550 protection from abuse orders for adults and children. We anticipate this number continuing to grow and have recently added an additional legal advocate to meet this need. The legal and victim advocates help clients throughout the entire legal process, from the preliminary interviews and hearings up and through sentencing. In addition to the Wise Option staff, trained volunteer advocates share the task of meeting victims at the hospital or police station to provide support and information about the services that are available to them once they've been victimized. Another important aspect of Wise Options is our prevention efforts. Last fiscal year, despite COVID, we provided 1,646 individuals in Lycoming County with education and awareness. Our prevention educator reaches into daycares, primary and secondary schools, youth placement programs, colleges, workplaces, and medical facilities to provide education and awareness tailored to specific organizational needs. Our goal is preventing future violence and promoting referrals back to our services. Despite COVID, like I said, our community education and prevention efforts are continuing to rise. In April alone, our prevention educator attended and presented at 35 different events and interacted with a total of 1,060 individuals within Lycoming County. In the month of April alone. Like our mission to assist victims, our programmatic successes continue to grow. We have established positive working collaborations with law enforcement, the courts, children and youth, the medical field, and educational institutions, to name a few. Each of these efforts continue to grow and provide opportunities for Wise Options to further outreach into the community and hope that we can save lives. In addition to Wise Options, our Liberty House program serves 61 adults and children experiencing homelessness in Lycoming County last fiscal year. Liberty House is a permanent supportive housing program for homeless women and women with children in Lycoming County who have a disabling condition or substance abuse disorder. Statistics prove that individuals who have a disabling condition are more likely to become homeless for a variety of reasons. Many times, they face stigmas and discrimination, making it difficult to find safe and affordable housing. They often have limited supports, have experienced trauma, and have deficits in life skills that prove to be barriers as well. The community-style living of Liberty House provides more than just a roof over their heads. It offers residents the opportunity to work with a case manager who assists them in achieving goals and making referrals for supportive services. Individuals are offered life skills such as budgeting, resume building, cooking, cleaning, obtaining important documents, and counseling services to address their trauma. Our goal in Liberty House is to equip individuals with the necessary tools to become self-sufficient, hopefully eliminating future returns to homelessness. We aim to provide a means for individuals to develop a sisterhood with other residents who have experienced similar hardships. Many of the women leaving our Liberty House program, moving to their own homes, do so with quality friendships and professional connections that are geared to help them continue in their success. These are relationships that would not have been built without the community living atmosphere and referrals provided through case management in our Liberty House program. We are thrilled to provide these crucial and life-saving programs to Lycoming County. Many individuals suffering within our community would not have support without our essential services. If you or someone you know is in need, please give us a call. We are eager to help.
Thank you. In my seventeen, in my thirty-plus years in the county, I had seventeen of those years I dealt with the assault caseload. A lot of those were domestic violence. And so I interacted with your agency on a daily basis. The dedication and professionalism of your staff is beyond measure. I can't thank them enough. They're dealing with people that are traumatized. They've been through horrific experiences and they need help. They want a way out. And they, they lack the courage, they lack the self-confidence. And you and your staff help instill that, let them know there's an alternative way of life for children and them to live peacefully. And through your efforts and through Liberty House, which is a great asset for our community, we can't take it off.
Well, thank you.
Amber, I know you depend a lot on the public. Maybe you can talk a little bit about how funding is provided for both Wise Options and Liberty House?
Yeah, so we receive federal, state, and local funding to provide our programs. A lot of our funding for Wise Options comes from the Pennsylvania Coalition Against Rape, the Coalition Against Domestic Violence, and the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. In addition to that, we depend on local United Way funding, as well as different city grants and Lycoming County funding sources that we can depend on to offset the need.
Right, because there's some things you can't use federal, state funds for, right? And you depend on the public to help you be able to provide certain things for those, for Liberty House and the others, right?
Yes, so our funding is very strict in what we can spend it on, and a lot of times that's not meeting individual needs. So, for instance, if a survivor needs to move into her own home and can't afford a washing machine, but the laundromat is next door to her abuser. It's a barrier for her. So her chances of being able to do her laundry, which is something that's essential and seems very basic to most of us, without being able to help her get a washing machine, for example, we're limiting her ability to succeed and to stay away from that abusive partner. So, just funds like that, donations for our shelters. That includes like pots and pans and dishes and towels, linens, things that we, that help us stay equipped and ready to help individuals.
I was gonna say, I think there are a lot of things that people can donate that are in good condition, that can help people get started when they get placed in an apartment that they're gonna need. So, thank you on behalf of the people of the county for doing that, for both Wise Options and Liberty House and the other services. Because it does make the community a safer place and it helps build self-sufficiency and resiliency.
I'd like to add that we've been, you know, through a tour of all the places, correct? And I'm gonna get back to your prayer today. You know, about the politics and the voting and everything. Imagine being a single parent today. Not only with the domestic violence, okay? But what's happening with fuel costs and just everything. They're already in a desperate spot. This only amplifies the problem even more. So funding is very essential. We've, we've gotta start working together. You know, politically, I don't care who, which side of the aisle you're on. This is one of the toughest times I've ever seen in my life. When you're seeing diesel fuel at five dollars and fifty, I mean, six dollars and fifty cents. Your regular is four dollars and fifty-seven cents. Just the expense of you getting around and your programs, it's out of control. And, you know, our leaders better get together and figure this out. So, this is another thing that we're looking at as far as our money. We understand the importance of it and I hope we can help you out a little bit more.
I think we can say Commissioner that we have not just this Board of Commissioners, but in the past, multiple boards of Commissioners from both sides of the aisle have been very supportive of Wise Options. So your remarks are quite prescient.
And COVID has made this ten times worse. People are locked in their homes. I don't think we have reached the tip of what we have learned what's gonna come out of that from domestic violence, abuse of children. And we're starting to see it. Thankful that your staff's there to talk to the ones locally.
And every week, trying to escape that, every week we're putting on, you know, another nonprofit, what they're doing for us. And it's incredible. We didn't have your organizations here, you know, what this county looked like. And it's critical. It's, it's something that's necessary and it has to be funded. So, we appreciate everything that you do. You've been around for a while now.
Yeah, well, thank you. There's never enough funding to meet the need in our community for survivors and individuals who are suffering in homelessness. There really isn't. So, I really appreciate your dedication to those issues.
I want to thank people before you like Deb Shibitz and.
That's a good point.
Those leaders that helped this program grow. Can you repeat just the April numbers alone?
So that was how many individuals we've reached in the community to educate and provide awareness about our services. So it was 1,060.
Just one one.
Yep.
That's actually a really good point. And Deb Shibitz and who, when did the program get founded? What year? Did Wise Options and Liberty House get founded? Do you know?
Wise Options was 1977. And Liberty House was 1986.
It was in the eighties. I think it was about right, right when I started.
I was thinking that you're relatively young and these folks like Deb Shibitz and the other folks, you know, built this and helped other people before them too, but you've, we all stand on other people's shoulders, right? And you're doing a great job. And they laid a great foundation.
And judges have supported it, like Judge Keyes or Judge McCoy was so instrumental.
Absolutely, yeah.
And those judges have helped grow the program to assist these individuals that are living horrific lifestyles. I mean, I can. And it's not just, excuse me, it's just not physical abuse. It's emotional, it's financial abuse, it's all types of abuse. And I had one on my caseload that would terrorize. And thank God, she's free of him forever. He passed. But he stood in a living room with her children. And said, "Pick a wall." Said this to his kids, "Pick a wall." Because that's where your mom's brains are gonna be blown out of. Saying that to two children, seven, ten, eleven years old. It's just horrifying. Thank God, she's okay. The kids are grown. One's a doctor. And she'll never have to worry about that terror ever again.
I was gonna say, it cuts across all socioeconomic class lines, race lines, everything you have. Jews is no particular class or group. You know, the other one, and I'm not sure how much you do with this, but elder abuse, which is a form of domestic violence also, and which Judge Bledsoe has been doing a lot of work trying to bring attention to that, is becoming a growing problem, especially as the elders grow in our society. Which is, which is, they come to, do you see many seniors coming or?
We do. And in fact, when you talk about COVID and restrictions that that's put on families, that's, before COVID, that was happening with elders because they were already restrained. They had limited mobility, already, you know, stuck in their homes or in placement facilities. So their connection with the outside world is very limited. So their ability to speak up about what may be happening to them is next to none. You know, they're not getting that opportunity. So it's really sad and detrimental and like you said, it does not discriminate. Domestic and sexual violence, homelessness, it can happen to so many different people and it does. And it's not just the poverty-stricken, you know, inner-city family that's experiencing it.
And if you know of anyone, please go, reach out to them and try to give them the help. Try and encourage them to help.
Yes, like I said, we're eager to help. We're here, we're ready, we have the services, and we, we just need the support from the community. Thanks a network.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and next speaker, I believe, at the library.
All right, we'll go to reports. I'm gonna pitch it for budget finance. It's on vote to approve the account. Payable capture coverage report. This is 3/18, approved on May 11.
I'd ask for motion.
I'm willing to approve.
Any questions or discussion? Could we say aye?
Aye.
I'm gonna skip ahead to the action items, to action 3.4, which I'm working with Chris Brulon, who's on the line, who's traveling. Given taking care of. So I'll hold up 3.4. It's vote to approve ordinance 2022-12.
Good morning, Chris.
Good morning Commissioners, how are you this morning?
Good, how are you?
Real fine. Thank you for accommodating my schedule with this remote presentation.
Yes.
Would you, would you like me to present the ordinance?
Yes, please.
So what's before you is an ordinance, as I read the caption, that would authorize a general obligation note in the amount of $8,906,000 and would authorize the sale of that note to People's Security Bank and Trust for the purpose of refunding your 2012B and 2014 bonds. Now you'll recall last month, on April 7th, you passed an ordinance that would authorize a bond issue for this same purpose. And at that time, after you had already gone through the rating process and taken some other steps to get ready for that bond issue, we did know and it occurred that we were chasing the market. That rates were moving away from you and that the savings that we had first expected, you see, were diminishing. We set, you set a threshold at that time, a minimum savings of $220,000 or so. Well, Joe Muscatello from Bennington's Gathergood, as your advisor, decided that he ought to see what else might be out there and decided to pursue some banks that he's talked to and then developed some relationships with. And one of those banks gave him an indicative rate of 2.77%, which when he ran the numbers proved that you could save potentially in excess of $400,000. That was really a surprise because, you know, in this market, not only are rates going up in general among the general investment population, but banks tend to be more conservative than others and tend to raise rates quicker or more defensively than others. But nonetheless, maybe for their other business development reasons, this bank gave him an indicative rate that was attractive. So Joe then went and bid out your note issue with the same refunding purpose to, I don't know, as many as eight to 10 other banks to reject the market. In the end, People's Security came back and put into running this 2.77% rate that they talked about. Not only is it a good rate, it's a half a point better than anybody else and that we got bids from. And it is a fixed rate the entire term, prepayable at any time. So, you know, without sounding like I'm campaigning, I do think that we have to applaud the offer from People's Security out of Scranton because it is, it's sort of a no lose for you. If, sometimes in a situation like this, there are restrictions on your prepayment opportunities so that when you choose to take the refunding this in front of you, you're also giving up, maybe another opportunity might come along in a couple of years. Or it's very common for banks not to quote a rate the entire 16-year term, but instead you quote a rate saved for five or eight years with a reset. And resets don't do us any good. You can't be sure you're gonna save money at a rate where we set higher in the future. So, if you're inclined, we have in front of you an attractive proposal to accomplish that same refunding at about twice the savings that you established as your minimum. And I think around a 5% range. You know, we got pretty spoiled there when rates were so off at a low a few years ago that we saw savings as a percentage of an issue at eight and nine and 10%. We aren't there. We're in around five, but that's still twice of what your target was and twice of what we would historically think was a valuable transaction. If you perceive that this, the ordinance that you passed back on April will be repealed so that we won't go down that path anymore. We'll go to this bank loan. And we would schedule closing for mid-June, but if you take an accident there, you'll lock in the rate and you're locking the savings. Joe needs to run some final numbers. So when I, when I give you a number of $440,000, that's still subject to his final numbers. Obviously, he just hasn't nailed down some costs. I think he's budgeted plenty of allowance in their court costs. And I believe the savings are all gonna be achieved in this, in this budget year. So you'll see the benefit right away.
This is great news. Thank you, Chris, for the explanation. And we can't thank Joe enough for his professionalism and expertise and his reaching out to the, all the options that we have available. And unlocking us in a rate because interest rates are fluctuating quickly. Going, they're gonna continue to increase unfortunately. And so this is wonderful news.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that, you know, this is from a bank. And so if tomorrow, I'll say tomorrow, if in the very near future, those interest rates were to drop, we could refinance again, no pause. And the savings of $440,000, somewhere around there, is, is something that Joe Muscatello, Chris, you've always looked out for the county of where we can save money on our bonds. And by the way, this, this does not change the, the date that it ends. It's, it goes out to August 15th, 2038. It's roughly savings of about $27,500 per year, if you wanted to calculate it out like that. But I think this is the first time that, since I've been in the Commissioner, that we've used a bank. Am I, could I be incorrect there, Chris, or do we usually just always go out for bonds?
It's the first time you've used a bank for a long-term financing.
For a long term.
You've had some loans from CNN over the years that were very helpful aboard the short-term environment. And as I say in my time, for a bank to go 16 years on a new relationship, they didn't ask for any deposits. They're not charging a fee. And I'm not saying, hey, that would be wrong, but usually when we do get banks interested, there's sort of some other elements of the relationship. And this one's just really attractive.
Yep.
I have to believe that a lot of this is the doing of, of you and Joe and particularly Joe and Joe's relationship with these banks to be able to basically say, listen, we wanted to do this bond refinancing in the bond markets that are not going favorably. So we thank Joe and we thank you for this. It's, it's very much appreciated. And recognize that the terms that we're getting are not the typical term that one would get.
I appreciate that and I'll pass it on to Joe. I think that the reality is that, yes, he does have some relationships. Yet this is not a one-to-one. yes, he does have some relationships, yet this is not a one-to-one offer. He did go out and bid it to be sure that it, you know, tested the market for you.
Absolutely.
And, and as Tony, Commissioner Messer said, it's a non-extending term, this is net after costs. It's, I'm really surprised at it. We, we have seen the banks retreating in this market, and I suspect this bank thought that they could start to build a new relationship, and, and obviously this bank's, I think, you know, making decisions that they believe that what we're in won't last forever, and this would be a good loan for their portfolio.
Right. No, and, and we, we recognize that, and we do appreciate it, and I think it's a testament to Joe's experience too, because as Commissioner Messer said, we've never had this situation, so.
Do we have our solicitor on the line? Is there anything else we should be aware of, Solicitor?
Who's that?
Okay, thank you. All right. Have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All clear, say aye.
Aye.
So Carrie, thank you, Chris. Safe travels.
Thank Joe for us also.
Yep.
All right, we'll be in touch. I appreciate your, your movement on this action item.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Yep, we'll resume action items 3.1. Kirsten McLaughlin's here, vote to approve community development block REC subrecipient agreement with Montorsville Borough.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioners. This is just the Federal fiscal year 2020 CEG subrecipient agreement with Montorsville Borough. This is for their continuation of their homeowner sidewalk reconstruction project and Montorsville's fourth phase of curb cut reconstruction over there. And it is in the amount of $77,843. This is one of those grants that Montorsville gets its own allocation with the contract going through.
Okay. We'll motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All clear, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie.
Thank you.
I got the next couple of items, so I'll start with the first item. It's a vote to approve the Department of Fire and Water Protection Grant Program. The estimated cost for this is $97,080, and RCS, they can pick up 75% of those costs, and then the 25% of those costs are picked up by the sponsor. We've done these in the past. I think the last time we've done this, maybe four, five years ago. And there's two properties that we're looking at in particular, one's in Muncie, the other one's in Williamsport. And of course, these are all flood-prone type projects, and that require some type of construction to the, to the area to make the property more viable.
Okay. Got a question?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions? All clear, say aye.
Aye.
The next item I have before you is vote to approve amendment to agreement with ESI equipment. This is in particular to the body insert that we are utilizing for the coroner's office. It's the truck insert, it's the cap. There was just an error that was overlooked with regards to some of the lighting, so we had to do an amendment for that, but it is a 2022 budgeted item.
Okay. Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
All clear, say aye.
Aye.
So Carrie.
I'm also going to be doing J.C. York's item for him, 3.5. That's vote to approve the rental agreement with best line equipment. This is just a machine for the grinding and polishing of the trees along the bank and the edges out of the road.
Okay. Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All clear, say aye.
Aye.
The next item, 3.6, so the first here is vote to approve the container transfer on the transportation, planning, and program grant agreement.
Morning, Sal.
Good morning, Commissioners. So if you remember, on the April 28 meeting, I'm doing the CSBT implementation amendment, that's the $103,000 that NPO got in the state planning and research funds, so it's 100% funded through that. That amendment was not in the original agreement with PennDOT that you approved back on February 14th. So all we're doing today is you're approving the new agreement, including that $103,000 CSBT implementation funding in the new agreement. Don't have to answer any questions.
Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Questions for Sal? All clear, say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sal.
You too.
Next item, 3.7. Kelly Robinson, vote to approve nominating Paula Young, Carla Miller, and Alan Fowler to the Leupene County Local Emergency Planning Committee.
Commissioners, this is Hutch. I'll be covering this. This is just a formality to appoint the EMH staff, Paula Young and Carla Miller, as well as Alan Fowler from UGI. Your approval will actually send the nomination up to Pima for their appointment to the LEPC committee.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All clear, say aye.
Well, I'd like to add that although we don't hear from this committee that often, it is very important committee, the preparedness when they go through the exercises. I'm aware, if you wanted to elaborate a little bit about this committee, so that the public is aware of what they do, go ahead.
Yeah, LEPC essentially, although by another name, deals with our hazardous materials in the county, with our SARA sites and planning. They're responsible, it's composed of both county staff members as well as representatives from each agency. Like I spoke of Alan Fowler from UGI. We also have like DEP, as well as, like I said, other utility carriers there. Handle things as in, yearly, our SARA types of hazardous materials need to report on the amounts and types of hazardous chemicals they maintain. And like the Commissioner said, yes, it is very important. A lot of work done on the backside of that. We're not always at public meetings and everything, but it is dealing with all the hazards in the county, as well as contracting with our, our hazardous materials response team, which is based out of Winfield down Route 15 and Fire Reserve. We contract through them for any major hazardous material incident.
So Hutch, when you read in the paper, some other part of the country, there's been a chlorine leak and so forth. This committee is the committee that's monitoring how much chlorine is stored at each facility, making sure that they file the proper reports for safeguards, et cetera, right?
Absolutely. Once, once their annual reports, they're doing in the first three, the first three months of the year, but then we have plans for all the sites that are updated on an annual basis. And once those plans are updated, they're then forwarded out to the local first responders, the fire department, the police agencies, the hospitals, all copies, as well as here at the EOC, and, you know, to carry on all that information.
What's impressive is that if, if something does happen, there's a plan already in place.
There, yes. All the, now, obviously, we could have something happening on the highway where we don't have a plan, but yes, for all these fixed sites, we know their, the number of chemicals, the amounts they're holding, as well as the, the law actually requires them to have local emergency response plans in place that they forward us, and then we tie their little, small, local response plans into the municipal plan, into the county plan. And any of our first responders are trained up to an operations level where they are required to know how to do some defensive tactics, biking, damming, and, you know, some, some very rudimentary control. But then anything that goes above that then requires the approval of Kelly, EMC, and then we would call in the response team and Fire Reserve, and they come in, and, you know, they're the guys that you see dressed up in full suits and are in there working in the chemicals for, you know, for hours at a time sometimes.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Hutch. All clear, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie.
Next item, 3.8. Jordan's here, a vote to approve amendment to 231 Redham Incorporated.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Ken.
This is an amendment to the grant we have with Redham, and all we're looking to do is add a 2107 Leupene Creek Road to the trash.
Which is a United Street Office.
Yes.
Which will be up this week in Riverside, I believe. Tuesday?
Monday.
Monday.
How many kicks that has to work out?
A few here and there, not, not many. Someone who are the, changing how to do the top rates, and what, and what their cost cost.
Riverside ceremony will be on Monday at 10, 10 o'clock, I believe.
What a, what a great job you did, and your staff. It's quite impressive. And I know one person who's seen.
I think I know who you're talking about.
Yeah, why?
The job's over.
He actually has room to move around now.
Yes, he does. And I think it's going to serve him really well.
And I truly believe that, that building that office is going to be a model for other United Street Offices throughout the state.
Oh, I agree 100% about this. It incorporates pretty much everything that's needed. We put a good team together, we're getting, and I hope that, I really hope that we miss much of it, so.
And the public can understand that while we spend money, it's going to be, you're always going to have an MDJ office. It's going to be there for the next 50 to 100 years. And, and you've built it for the last return of.
It's hope.
And they may never admit to put that insert in for water.
Yeah. Thank you, Ken. You, you really did a yeoman's job on that. And the staff, all the workers that were up there, please extend to them that we appreciate what they did.
Motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All clear, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item is Billy Please, vote to approve community action thing, subrecipient agreement with Fairfield Township.
Hi, Billy.
Good morning, Allison.
Good morning, Commissioners. You might notice I'm not Billy Please. I'm Allison Harmon. I took over for Billy Please as the Natural Resources Planner a few weeks ago.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'll be presenting a subrecipient agreement between Leupene County and Fairfield Township. The township will be granted $139,058 of the county's 2022 capital implementation funding for the restoration of minutes one. This will mostly involve the bank's stabilization and function and agreement.
Okay. Have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions? All clear, say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Good luck in your new position, too. Excited to have you.
And last but not least, 3.10, Leslie Kowal.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning, Maya.
Good morning.
We are presenting, and we're asking your approval today. This is our maintenance agreement with Marco for 12 copiers that were purchased in 2021. Actually, they were bumped over to 2022 because we weren't able to get them at that time. So this is also going to save us money in the long run. As you can see, we are going to be paying .0033 for color versus .055. And we are going to be paying .00375 for black and white versus .0089 for the 2021 copiers, and, and anything past that. So 22, 23, 24, and 25 until the RFP is over.
Okay. Any questions? Are you not, have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All clear, say aye.
Aye.
So Carrie, thank you.
So Leslie, do, I see we have an allowance on each color. Do we typically go over them? Like colors 23, black and white's 120, 126 now?
Right. So, so we're going to actually do something new. So it used to be every copier had its own allowance. We're actually going to bundle them now, so that in case, let's say you use 100 out of your 150, but, but Commissioner Messer, or Messer only used 50 out of his 150, now they're combined. So you wouldn't get charged anymore, and he wouldn't get charged anymore. So it's going to just equal out. So we're, we're going to give that a shot, and we think that that's going to be better in the long run.
Yeah, I think that's what we do.
To bundle everything. Yeah.
So like the TV commercials?
Right. There you go.
Okay, well, that's great. Thank you.
We're not allowed to print any color in our office anyway.
We're trying to get to the point where we don't print as much, and we use our iPads, but we're not quite, not quite.
You don't even have your iPads at hand.
Commissioner, we're going to need to talk.
I like to look at it. I like to, you know.
Okay, thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
And we'd like to defend.
Oh, thank you. We'll just agree on one of them, and then we'll get it going.
Yeah, we're literally thankful to the county.
You designed that, right?
A little bit of thought behind it, yeah. So I send over the thoughts to the company, and then they put, put it together and.
Great.
We're excited that Sirius is returning to its full capacity this year.
Yes, yes.
It'll be expanded in 2023. It'll be great for the county, as we have our visitors coming.
Agreed.
Wonderful time of the year for, for Intana County. Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Collins?
What do you think?
I don't know.
Commissioner? Okay. Public. Mr. Adams.
Morning.
I have a copy of that booklet on my desk.
Is it? Oh, yeah. Um, let me start. Oh, the, that report from Amber, that's really hard to listen to, honestly.
Yeah.
It really is. I think it's probably, probably a great thing for maybe the churches to maybe support, or maybe to do, I don't know. But, but it's definitely something right in our own area. Probably maybe follow some more money towards how, they probably could always use most people, but I don't know how they'd do that, you know. It's, it's hard to, it is hard to see things how they are, you know, deteriorated and things. Here's a little quote from Ben Franklin. It says, "Only if archers' people are capable of freedom, as nations become corrupt and vicious, they have more need of masters." So if you can't keep your mortals where they're supposed to be, and we get that where they got it from, of course, from the Bible scriptures and the law. And it's not just their idea, because they went to Blackstone, it was way before their, their time, and they just studied things that were just solid, you know. And that, that's what brought the Great Awakening. And they may suppose know that. So that allowed science to open up. Because before that, they were being content because church-state relationship, and how that worked was the government took over the church. That's how it always operated. And they enforce everything and everything in one. So, so the idea of a Christian nation, as I said before, is that we have good leadership, people that know they have to answer to God. And when you don't have that, this is nonsense that comes, that comes about. Because when the wicked bear rule, the man hides himself. And people are afraid to speak their mind when wicked people are in rule, and when you don't have that freedom of thought, freedom to debate. And that's one of the, one of the founding principles of the country, you know. And so it's, it's hard to see, but, but I'd love, I'd love to see that we can still, we can comment. And I knew the fellow last week mentioned about the fact checks on Trump. But when you have the Fox that's watching the hen house, and the media that's so blatantly anti-American for the most part, I mean, we can see it. And everyone can have their own opinion, for the most part, but they're the ones still, ones doing the fact checking. So what do you think's going to come of it? And most of those things that be, have been shown to be false. And no one's perfect. And I don't, I don't defend President Trump for some things he says. I think sometimes he just went overboard with some things. But this is where we're at. So hopefully, we can find ways to get people together and talk, you know. So maybe through stuff, or somehow get community together, and not just one side, you know. Open that up. There's something else. I guess I did check a little bit about the, I know this is more like, you said, the city deal with the, with the levy. Now, we do have, they did have any dredging company come in, or do they ever dredge that on their own, you know, in that area, just like this? Would that help the levy if you dredged, like, maybe a little bit far out, help make more of a channel and add some of that material to the levy? more of a channel and add some of that material to the levy? But, I mean, I'm not an engineer, but I guess that might be a possibility, right? Help tell them. And see if there's fertile soil with it.
I think the system's just so outdated. Come back to the 50s. Where, you know, what else, everything needs to be, needs to be updated and changed out. You can't get parts for certain things anymore in the room. And that serves its time.
You mean dredging the river? So I think one of the problems, and I'm not a hydrologist, but from what I've learned is that one of the problems with dredging our rivers or creeks is that it increases velocity of the water coming downhill, which then in turn increases the potential for damage from the velocity of the water. Now, there's a difference between dredging and taking out of the creek, impediments to water coming down that creates a danger, right? And you can actually, under the DEP regulations, you can take out of a creek anything you can reach from the shore. So if there is a tire there that you can reach from the shore, you can take it out without a problem. If there's a big log that you can get to. What you can't do is you can't go into the creek with a backhoe and start moving things around without a problem.
Tom, that's a huge issue, because you have flood after flood. These creeks, these streams, and debris comes down, and it's out in the middle, and logs, it's like, it's like having a beaver out there building a dam. And I mean, I spoke to a gentleman out there, 87. He's been through three floods. He had to put his house up on stilts. And he has a backhoe on his property. He says, if I could go out there and remove those logs and just get them out of there, I'd be better off. And he's not permitted to do that. Because once he goes out in that water, it's different. So that's something that has to be changed.
We talked to the Army Corps. We talked to all the agencies because of what we see, the gravel bars, the sediment. And it's not just sediment below the water, it's the sediment above.
Right, right.
And that is part of the solution to reduce the threat of flooding. The dredging is, you know, they do it in other areas, but they don't like to do it. And Commissioner Vito explained why. But when, I'm a fisherman. And, you know, I, like, I'm in the creek watershed. And, you know, when you get on your boots and you're starting to walk up the stream, and then all of a sudden, you sink into mud that wasn't there before, it's scary.
Yeah, it is.
And it's not just there in the creeks, it's in the river as well, where they shut down the one down in Muncie, where it became too dangerous to, you know, put in your boats. So there are all, that's one of the things that I really, truly believe we need to do. We need to clean up the rivers and the streams, period. And we wouldn't see Montorsville flooding every high range. We just wouldn't.
You just go down, and you can look at the, you can see the debris going through there, down tree limbs, the logs that are washed down through.
Just go and look out, and look down.
The barriers. I mean, it's just, and if you can get that out of there, it just would be so much more efficient.
Yeah. What if we're not going out in the creek and you shoot like that grappling hooks to grab that stuff and pull it up, pull it across, you know, and get it out of the creek? You know, something like that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, of course, some of it's quite a business, you know, that's some of that work.
You guys stay in the banks.
Yeah. With the operations up.
We appreciate you stopping every.
Thanks, man.
It's nice to hear your input.
Others, I know it's one of our things. You know, the preamble to the Constitution includes a general welfare, you know, the general welfare of the nation. And it doesn't mean a welfare program like we see. It doesn't help anybody. People are actually put in a, put in a situation of life that they get used to and become dependent upon it, and it doesn't help. But we have an administration that doesn't care about the general welfare of the country. So anything that comes out of those executive orders, really, they should just be ignored. It does not help us, you know. Like, see, they don't want to allow another grants or land for the oil and exploration, you know, in the last, but no one's using land. And that's why they go to federal lands a lot of times, because they're mostly not billed on, and they're wide open. They're full of natural resources instead of going to private property. So it's a better cost for everyone around. They just continually fight against our general welfare. And I'm seeing it's a crime for people to wake up to what, you know, their plans.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any online?
Nothing online.
Okay. Complete our agenda, so we'll be back here on Thursday, May 19, at 10:00 a.m. All right, enjoy your day. All right, who's going to?
I want you to do RMS. Is it done now? I want you to do RMS.
I'll be here at 2:00. We're looking at the allocation, you can see, with that money.
Steve Marshall, good day.
Beautiful.
Yes, it is.